Good evening. Is everybody set? Ready to go?
That's great.
Okay, good evening and welcome. Happy New Year. Welcome to Happy New Year to you. Welcome to the January 3rd, 2017 Regular City -- Canyon City Council Meeting. So, I wonder if this morning -- this morning, this afternoon, I'd like to call to order. Could we have the invitation with Don Brightwell, the Good News Prison Ministries? Do the invocation, please. And then we'll do the Praise of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please join me in prayer. Most gracious and almighty God, as we look to the start of a new year, we pause to give thanks to you for your directing and sustaining hand in the past year. As we look ahead, we seek from you wisdom and direction. We pray for steadfastness and insight for our council members. We pray that you will guide and strengthen all of those who work for and on behalf of our city. And we especially lift up those whose work may take them into harms way. Protect and keep them safe in the course of their duties. We ask that you might bless and prosper our city and our citizens, and that we might be to the praise, the glory of your grace. Yes, we ask in the name of your precious son. Amen.
Would you call the roll, please?
Foutman.
Here.
Councilmembers Ekstrom.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Gill.
Here.
Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Weed are excused. We have a quorum.
Okay. So, before we get into step two, I'd like to go ahead and open up with the first 15 minutes, or if we have no one to speak, just have open mic, as we had at previous council members of council meetings. If anyone would like to address the council, I'd like to at least have your name and step up to the mic, and we have the three minutes, and you can address the council. Well, that was easy enough. Okay. Hearing or seeing none, let's move on to step two. This is where the citizens have a written request to speak to city council. Is anyone with a written request to talk to city council?
Have received one written request to speak to council from Gregory Carlson Carlson, 1151 Park Avenue. He wants to speak to council about community marijuana cultivation. However, that's an item on the agenda, so we will wait for that item to --
Okay.
I didn't read that until just now. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I should've explained that if there's anything on the agenda, then we will take have you speak during that agenda item. Okay? Very good. Then, as for the minutes of the December 19th council meeting, are there any corrections? Hearing none, could I have a motion in a second from council?
Mr. Mayor, pardon me. I make a motion to approve the minutes from the 1219 Regular City Council Meeting, as written.
Thank you. Second. Mr. Meisner, thank you. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
And Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. At this time, are there any council members that have announcements? This is an awful quiet group. Mr. Meisner, you raise your glasses.
Uh, we have a meeting this week, don't we?
Tomorrow.
General Government Meeting tomorrow. And normally Dennis would announce that, but of course Dennis can't, so. Four o'clock, here. Full agenda.
Agenda, and we're gonna do it. The general government meetings have been changed, and they'll be on a camera, on TV, and they'll be in the setup that we have right now, so that the public can see them.
And keep in mind that if there's any public comment or input, we are now handling that in the same manner that we do here, that if you'd like to speak at that meeting, prior to the meeting, if you'd complete one of those little sheets and turn it in, then we will allot you the amount of time. Thank you.
Any other announcements? So, I assume that the council knows that the mayors of Fremont County meet, and tomorrow at 3:00, the mayors, I think there's six of us, that will be meeting. We meet once a month, and we'll meet this time at the county administration building, and we meet once a month, at 3:00, and unfortunately, it's right before the general government meeting, so they put me on the agenda first, hopefully, and I can get here at 4:00. So. Okay, then, any other announcements? If not, we'll move on. Are there any -- a call for the adoption of the agenda, the consent agenda. Tony, would you review the consent agenda items, please?
Yes, Mayor. 5A would redesignate the Bulletin Board and City Hall as the official place for notice of public meetings. 5B would authorize a mayor's signature on an agreement to participate in the Upper Arkansas Recycling Program, Upper Arkansas Recycling Program, at a cost of $13,067. We usually also get kind of a rebate at the end of the year, once commodities have sold, so that's the maximum cost. We'll see a lower cost at year end. 5C would authorize payment of $10,000 based upon the recommendation of the general government meeting of 12-7 for the Golden Age Center Shuttle. 5D relates to authorizing mayor's signature on a contract for marking services of the chamber for the amount of $52,000, which was recommended by the general government committee on, again, 12-7. 5E would approve a revised museum director job description salary range. I know that Councilmember Meisner asked me about that. We've had four previous reclassifications in the last couple of weeks, as we try to catch up. These are all related to expanded job duties. In this particular case, it was a recognition that this job was never properly reclassified when the current holder, Lisa, moved from the library to the museum, where she oversees four people. She was still operating under her former classification when she was at the library, so this is making up for that revision. 5F declares various items, one of which is a former police patrol vehicle we'd like to donate to Canyon City High School, for the students to be able to work on. Other things related to that are some sound equipment, some other electronic equipment. As surplus property, that would allow us to dispose of these nonusable assets per city purchasing policy, but we specifically want to donate the patrol vehicle to the high school, so those kids can work on it. 5G would authorize city administrator to extend the service agreement for citywide janitorial service to cleaning company of Fremont County, not to exceed $61,248. We just made some small variations in the contract, whether providing more service, particularly at the library, a little less service at some of the other facilities, to kind of balance out their workload, but the library in particular needed more services. 5H would authorize mayor's signature for the First Amendment and restatement of the IGA with Regional Emergency Communication Center, as it relates to the method of potential repayment for the reimbursement to Fremont County of the $100,000. We believe, based upon discussions, that that money is going to be reimbursed by the 911 Authority, but just in case, this amendment covers how the reimbursement will occur, absent of that. 5I would appoint the Deputy Chief of Police, Alan Cooper, as the interim police chief, as we search for a new chief of police. Unfortunately, Alan is not an interested candidate, even though he's qualified for that position, so we will be appointing a new chief of police in the next several months. 5J would appoint, again, Alan as the alter to the mayor, as the city's representative to the Regional Emergency Communication Authority. I know the mayor attends most of his meetings, at most, he might attend one during this interim period of time, but he's quite familiar with the operations, and it'd be the logical party to be that alternative rep. 5K would authorize his mayor's signature on IGA with Fremont County for the collection of the use tax, which was suspended when you had the business incentives over the last several years. Now that that's no longer in effect, we need to collect that, and we're the logical party, so we receive a 5% admin fee for that service, so it's kind of a win-win. 5, Alan would authorize mayor's signature of a, we call it a lifestyle management service agreement, and in fact, it's what we've talked about for months now, the health risk assessments. We now have a contract with Centura Health, a local hospital, to provide those services. We'll be covering about 284 employees and dependents with that contract, so it should be an amount not to exceed $28,000, but we believe because of the proactive nature of early diagnostic evaluation of people's health, and hopefully, a change in lifestyle that will reap much greater savings in months and years ahead. We'll keep you posted. As it relates to the bids, 117 is for chlorine, an supply of chlorine for the water department to DPC Industries out of Hudson, Colorado, an amount not to exceed $21,500. Bid 217 would be aluminum sulfate for the water department to Chem Trade Chemicals U.S. out of New Jersey, not to exceed $59,000. 317 is a high-end pump replacement to the water department to Water Technology Group, and I think we explained the last time that this unfortunate pump is so worn out, it can't be repaired. We generally try to repair these pumps. You approve a pump repair in the last two months, but in this case, it has to be replaced. Carpeting for City Hall, our carpet currently up in the second floor is 12 years old, and reflects that, and so we want to just keep City Hall as fresh and spotless as when it was found on day one of 2004. Ford 150 pickup to the water department, to Spradley Ford. This was also bid locally, but unfortunately, the local bid was 9% higher than the awarded bid. Asphalt, this is citywide, to Martin Marietta, Colorado Springs, not to exceed $49,000. Again, Adams here, too, if you have any questions about either asphalt or the concrete bid, is 1017, that's to Fremont paving and ready mix, not to exceed $53,000. The flowable fill to Fremont paving and ready mix, not to exceed $14,000. And 1217 is gravel for the street division to T H E aggregate from Canyon City, not to exceed $59,000. And these are related to routine street maintenance throughout the years, part of our budget that we allocate about $400,000 a year for. Any questions?
That's it. Questions? Mr. Meisner.
Sure. My first question is item F, which is the surplus property.
Yes.
We have one of our techie guys here, but are those hard drives been removed, or what's the cleaning process that we've done with those hard drives?
My understanding, they were cleaned. I'll double-check after the meeting to ensure that.
Yeah. He's here. Yeah. They're cleaned or removed? Excellent.
Russians will not be using them.
Got it.
They already have it.
Sorry. No. Can I have another question?
Yes, yes, sir, you may.
Item H, I'm still trying to understand the intergovernmental agreement.
Sure.
But I'm confused, as we get to the end of the agreement, and they mention the Florence Fire Department, and the Florence Fire Department doesn't seem to be involved in any of the equations relative to sharing the costs.
That's true. They are not an official member. They have a service agreement, which I think is unusual, to be frank. Talked to the agency about that. Maybe the mayor or others could better explain how that happened, but I know there should be a diligent effort to get them on board as a full-fledged member, because that would subject them to, particularly, to future capital expenses, which now they are not subjected to. Doesn't seem fair to the other parties to be the only parties carrying that weight.
I believe what I gleaned from that, it's pretty much a volunteer fire department. It's not like we have in our district. It's not a fire district, it's a volunteer. Do you understand the difference? You're staring at me.
Yeah, that we're paying for.
I know, but they're also paying for the service. They pay, they get charged for the service in case they get calls.
Okay.
So, yeah, they don't have the type of taxing ability that our district has, because we're not a volunteer. They are. Like Deer Mountain. Deer Mountain is in there. They are a volunteer.
Okay. I have another question.
Yes, sir.
I just want to clarify that on the bids for 917, for the asphalt, that is not, as I understand it, does not have anything to do with 2A. That is part of the normal $400,000 budgeted street maintenance, and is not 2A expenditures.
Correct. That's operations only. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah. Did you? Mr. Gill, did you have a question, or just holding your pencil up?
I was just holding my pencil.
Okay. Then, I have just the last question, and I probably know the answer to this. What, do we bid out the surplus equipment? Do they bid on it? Do we give it out? I know the police car, we're going to, but all the other equipment and things, do they have to bid on that, or do they take an auction? What do we, how do we get, we sell it?
The computer stuff, I think they're deeming that to be unusable, so that will go to junk. The mixer is going to go to that gov online bidding, so the mixer for the admin use for CCTV, for sound, that will go out to bid, but it'd be an online bid.
Okay.
Car, we will donate directly to the high school.
Okay. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Are there any additions, then, or corrections? Hearing none, could I have a motion in a second from council? Mr. Meisner.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ekstrom.
I move that we approve the agenda and consent agenda.
Second, Mr. Gill, could I have a discussion on that motion? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, item six is Administrator's Report, and since we went through a New Year's, you don't have to report everything that happened on New Year's, but I'm just kidding. I shouldn't do that. I'm so sorry. Could we have the Administrator's Report, please?
Nothing but other than to recognize, and some of the members are here, both from the Planning Commission and the Marijuana Cultivation kind of Task Force, that spent almost three months working on the product that you'll be reviewing shortly, and I just want to extend our appreciation for all their hard work and heavy lifting, and it was so successful that the council's adopted that format to look at other city-related issues, and we thank them for their hard work.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, I had a mayor or two from another city heard about what we were doing, and wanted to know if they could get a copy of that, which I thought was unique, how they found that out. I imagine from the paper and everything.
Mr. Mayor, there was a lot of work in that. Can we charge them for it?
You're getting paid enough.
No, no, no. Not, I mean, I've charged.
Oh, not you.
We had, charged them for it.
Oh, I see. Oh, for other mayors?
The other mayors.
I will bring that up. Thank you so much. I will.
I'll bet you it's voted down.
Okay, yes, probably. Okay, number seven is District One Vacancy. Could I have a report from the city clerk, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you will recall, I put a time, kind of timeline of events from the date that we received Councilmember Shiraki's resignation, until most current, the second timeline of letters of interest to be received, and at this point in time, I just think it would be best for council to give some direction to staff if they wish to move forward with more, seeking out more letters of interest on a position. Does cost money and a little bit of time, or just if you want to leave this vacant until a certain period of time, I just think we need to make some kind of public statement so we can give answers to those that may be interested.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Sure.
Mr. Meisner.
The tendency of council, as we all know, has been with committees, where we've had the number of applicants that equaled the number of open positions, is to appoint those people. I think in this particular case, it's a little different, that we, it's my understanding, we have a single applicant. I don't know that just because we have a single applicant, that means that we automatically appoint that individual to council. I think we've got a really strong council, a really diverse council. So, from a standpoint of appointing an individual, I think that, at least my preference is, is that we appoint somebody that could be cooperative and work with this council, but still be different and have their own opinions. I would suggest that whomever the individual is that we have, we afford that individual an opportunity for an interview from council, and council make a decision as to whether or not we are or are not going to appoint that individual.
Other comments?
That makes perfect sense.
Meisner, I mean, Schumacher? Sorry.
What is the term ending for District One?
December 31st of next year. Of 2017.
Okay. I don't know how to say this. I'm more toward the notion that we leave this position open until the November elections. It's been empty officially since August, and it seems like a tremendous event, knowing what our last year has been, to have somebody come on, and if we go through all this, it would probably be March before we could get them on, only to have them serve eight or nine months until the election. And I'm just throwing that out, if anybody wants to chime in here.
We would still have that option. If we afforded the individual the opportunity for an interview, we would still have the option of saying that we're not going to appoint that individual, which is a public statement, and then we could also, at that point in time, say we are not going to open it up for more applicants and close out the year.
Mr. Gill.
I feel in this that if somebody has taken the time to put the letter of interest in, that we as a council need to hear them, and hear what they know, and how their feelings are, and see if it will move forward with the way that we have, and make that decision at that time. If they did put the letter of interest in, then I think that probably we ought to hear what they have to say. And of course, whoever's doing this, I'm sure knows that the term ends at the end of the year, so, like I said, I think that we need to give them the opportunity to speak if they put a letter of interest in.
I would.
I was going to say, I don't have a strong opinion, one way or the other, so I would go with the majority at this point. Let's conduct an interview.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I would agree with that. I think we should at least conduct an interview, because someone did put their name in.
Right, and we can make a decision at that time, if we want this individual.
Right, I agree. So, shall we set a date and make a motion to that accord? I'd like to take a.
You have next Monday, which is the ninth, no, what is it? The ninth, and then the next meeting, the next Monday is the holiday. I would like to call this person, just to make sure they're available before you set that meeting, too. So, I don't know whether you want me to contact this individual and get some dates, and then you call, contact three, or the mayor can call a special meeting, too, and try coordinating that way, either or. Or just set a meeting, and I think that might not be as fair to set a meeting and then say, "He can't show up." So, if you want to direct staff, we could probably, you know, look at the ninth, or the following, after the 16th, it would be the 23rd.
The only thing that I ask is that it not be the week of the 16th, because I will be out of town, and I'd like to be involved in this interview.
16th will be full, we'll be doing the Senator Grantham, we'll have a council meeting, we'll have the vision meeting, that meeting, that week there's going to be pretty full.
Isn't the 23rd our open week?
That'd probably give everybody enough time to plan.
I, I. Make a motion, Mr. Meisner, please.
I make a motion. I move that we have a special council meeting on January 23rd to interview whatever applicants are available for District One opening.
Second. Can I get a specific time on that? Would you want it still at 6:00, or would you?
Earlier in the day. I don't want to come, yeah. First thing in the morning, 6:00 a.m.
5:00? 5:00?
Yeah, I suppose.
I can do anything after 3:00. After 3:30.
If that's the way it has to be, that's the way it has to be.
4:00?
We all know that I run Colorado Springs and Denver on a pretty much daily basis, but I will.
I'm hearing 4:00.
We will do 4:00.
Let's do 4:00.
At 4:00.
At 4:00.
I hesitated there, so it's at 4:00.
Okay. So, does everybody understand the motion? And then, Ms. Schumacher, second. There any discussion on that motion? Let's call the roll.
Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote, I'll call, contact the applicant.
Okay, number eight is ordinance number 25 of Series 2016. This is a second reading for special review use light starter industry with less than 100 employees in the C General Commercial District, that's 1213 South 8th Street and 1215 South 7th Street. This matter will be continued to the January 17th meeting, at which time the council will consider this ordinance on second reading. Bless you.
Excuse me.
Okay, number eight, we're going to open a public hearing. The public hearing is for zone code amendment, amending Title V and 17, community marijuana cultivation facilities. I'm hereby opening the public hearing. Could I report from the city planner, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is a public hearing for a zoning code amendment, and also for the addition of new chapter 5.60 to the municipal code for the regulation and licensing of community marijuana cultivation facilities. Excuse me. Public notice was published as required, at least 15 days prior to this public hearing. The Planning Commission met on December 13th and considered both of these amendments. They recommended a number of clarifying changes, particularly to Title V, the Title V ordinance, and because those were relatively extensive, we provided a red line for you. Their suggestions are the red line. Their advisory reports for both of these amendments are included in the staff packet, and some of, three of their suggestions were suggested by the city attorney not to be incorporated. Those are listed on the top of page two of your staff report, and I would imagine that we will discuss those shortly. I won't go into them right at this point. In early 2016, it came to the attention of the city that a facility existed in the commercial district that allowed the cultivation of marijuana by individuals for personal and medical use. This facility, which was a standalone building located out on Valley Road, operated without adherence to any pertinent state regulatory process, nor did it have city approval with respect to zoning. Currently, only medical marijuana facilities are allowed within the city, as they may be permitted by the state and licensed in the city. They are permitted only in the C Commercial District or the I Industrial District. Limited personal and medical grows for individuals are allowed at single-family residences. So, in an effort to determine whether such a facility like this, and this is Rooms to Grow, that was operated by Allison Housley, whether this could exist to offer the public a safe and secure alternative to single-family grows, the council agreed to work with the owner to devise an appropriate regulatory process. The city council formed a committee of about 20 community and city staff members who met weekly during the fall to research, discuss, and formulate proposed zoning regulations and special conditions. The group's membership list and admission statement is included in your packet. While the committee considered a great deal of concerns, in the end, their collaboration centered on four points. What is a community marijuana cultivation facility? Where should that be located? How should it be regulated? And what specific conditions of operation would be necessary to ensure a safe and effective facility? The community marijuana facility has been suggested to you to be approved as a special review use, which is the highest. special review use, which is the highest level of review of any land use in the city. The ci, the facility would also require a license where the particulars of the use would be documented and overseen. And then these two approvals would run concurrently through our process and be approved, both of them approved by the city council. Some of the very specific conditions of operation and other considerations are eligibility. So, residents of Canyon City and the areas, um, within the boundaries of the fire district would be allowed to use this facility to grow marijuana. There would be a maximum of three marijuana cultivation facilities in the city at any one time, and they would be chosen by a lottery process that is in the regulations fi, chapter five point six zero. Uh, again, they would be licensed and have a special review use. They would be restricted to the industrial district. They would be required to be at least a thousand feet from a school park or childcare facility. No part of the facility could be leased or subleased to anyone else. It couldn't contain a residence or any other type of, um, business activity. Um, there would be a limit on the number of plants that could be grown by individuals. There would be no onsite consumption of marijuana or alcohol. There would be specific hours of operation for each of the facilities. There would be a marijuana tracking system, and, um, as I said, there is a lottery system that is built into these regulations. Uh, the, again, the city council would, um, approve or deny, and at a minimum, the ordinance would be reviewed by the council every two years. In the end, what you'll be looking at are two different ordinances. One for the addition of the Title Seventeen regulations, which is to establish a definition to allow it in the industrial district and to describe the use by which it is approved, which is special review use. The second part of that is to approve a new chapter, five point six zero, into, um, the municipal code that would take care of all of the conditions and the way this particular business would be regulated. Public notice for this type of amendment is published. It was published on December nineteenth, and there have been no responses to the notice. I have all of the information in your packet, so the findings of fact and advisory report from the planning commission with their suggested conditions or suggested changes to the ordinance are there. Also, the excerpt from the meeting minutes of their meeting when they considered this is also in your packet. Both bills for ordinance, the fire district boundary map, so you can see where, um, folks would be allowed, and also, um, as I said, the members' list and mission statement. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them, but I did want to let you know that Councilman Meisner was on the, um, the committee, as was, uh, Mr. O'Rourke and Mr. Gill. Sorry, Mr. Gill. So, I, all of those members would be able to answer specific questions as well, and as Mr. O'Rourke indicated, there are people in the audience as well who participated and may have some suggestions.
Thank you, Terry.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Any comments or questions from council at this time? Mr. Meisner?
On page four of the staff report, phase two license application, I just want to make some corrections and make for sure that the public understands. In the planning commission meeting, Rooms to Grow was mentioned, and the terminology of grandfathered was mentioned, and again, uh, we have Rooms to Grow as being mentioned, as being allowed to participate in the licensing project, process. I just want to clarify that, considering that there were some facilities that were providing this service, the, the committee felt that those particular facilities, which Rooms to Grow happens to be one of those that we know of, we felt that those facilities should be afforded an opportunity to apply for the license first. They still have to apply for the full license process, just as anybody else would. It's just that they have a hundred and twenty-eight day, a hundred and twenty-day window to apply for that license, and then, uh, we go into the random selecting process. But there is no business, including Rooms to Grow, that is grandfathered or guaranteed to have a license. So, just, Terry and I have talked about it, but it's still showing up in some public information, and Rooms to Grow is not mentioned anywhere in this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Meisner. Any other questions? Any comments from the audience?
We have one written request, it's from Gregory Carlson. Greg, do you want to come up?
Thank you very much. My name is Gregory Carlson, one one five one Park Avenue, Canyon City, Colorado, and, uh, I was served on the, I currently serve on the planning commission and I serve on the, uh, I, I served on the marijuana committee in discussing this issue, and I just wanted to encourage your affirmative vote on this because, um, I, I, I think it's striking that there haven't been very many public comment requests after this public notice went out. I think it, it reflects a growing change in behavior towards this complicated issue. My reason, the reason I voted for this on the planning commission and supported it in the committee is because I believe that in every way, this ordinance that we have spent a great deal of time working on is better than the current status quo. Currently, the voters of this state decided that marijuana is, um, I wouldn't use the word right, but that people would have the ability to, to grow their own marijuana, and currently that's what they're doing in their homes right next door to us, uh, without any regulation at all, in potentially dangerous ways, potentially giving it to any sort of gray market out there, whether in the state or out of the state, and I don't think the police have the resources in any reasonable way to deal with the issue to, in this community or any other. I believe that by moving these kind of grow operations to the industrial sector is good for the city of Canyon City, it's good for our citizens, and it in every way moves these, the growth and grow operations to a more regulated environment, one where the police have access to inspect, one where the fire department has access to inspect, and one that I believe faces some pretty tough regulations to make sure that there are limits on the size of the canopy, um, on what other operations are allowed within the building. I think it's just a good piece of legislation, and I would ask that you, if you do have strong, I'm not a marijuana user myself, and I would ask that if you do have strong opinions on the marijuana issue, that you set those aside for the moment just to focus on the improvement of the status quo and moving these plants and dangers to our neighborhood and community to the industrial sector. I think it's, I, I, I'm not surprised that other mayors and other communities are looking at it, and I wish the city of Canyon City could charge for letting them borrow this legislation, because I think it's a really good bill. So, thank you for your time in, in listening to me, and I'd ask for your support on this measure. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Are there any further, any further, uh, comments from the audience? Okay, hearing none. Any further discussion of council?
One more comment?
Mr. Meisner?
I mean, a, as we go along and people ask, what, what is this about? I ask that you refer to page one of the ordinance, and I will read it. Whereas, the city recognizes the inherent dangers and potential nuances caused by the cultivation of marijuana within residences. In the second paragraph, whereas, the city desires to provide alternative means by which individuals who wish to cultivate marijuana can do so safely, and encourage the relocation of personal cultivation from residences into industrial zone districts. That's what this whole process is about.
Thank you, Mr. Gill?
In addition to that, what this brings to the table is it brings, uh, a metering of what is grown and where it goes. When people are growing in their backyards and doing this and doing that, if, if there's not a, a zoning complaint against them, then lord only knows where this stuff goes. They have to count each and every plant and be accountable for each and every plant that comes through their door as it comes in and as it goes out. One thing that really impressed me about this is people that are in the industry agreed to such, uh, stringent guidelines and, and ways of doing business. Uh, it shows that they're actively trying to do something, uh, the right way rather than the wrong way. So, once again, I would have to agree that, that this is beneficial in many ways to our city.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Anyone else? Any council member? Then I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing, and, uh, nine B is ordinance number one, series two thousand and seventeen. This is the first reading. I will need three to introduce this. Mr. Meisner, Mr. Gill, Mr. Ekstrom, and, uh, clerk, could you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number one, series of two thousand and seventeen, and ordinance amending section seventeen point oh eight, oh two oh, and seventeen point one two point one five oh, and chapter seventeen point two oh of the Canyon City Municipal Code to permit community marijuana cultivation facilities as a use by special review.
Going to have a motion in a second from council. Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor, council, I move that we approve ordinance one, series of two thousand and seven, amending Title Seventeen zoning regulations. First reading.
Thank you, Ms. Schumacher, thank you. Are there any discussions on the motion? Hearing none, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
And it's nine C, this is ordinance number two, series two thousand and seventeen. This is the first reading. I also need three to introduce. Mr. Gill, Mr. Meisner, Mr. Ekstrom, clerk, could you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number two, series of two thousand and seventeen, and ordinance amending Title Five of the Canyon City Municipal Code by the addition of a new chapter five point six oh establishing regulations for community marijuana cultivation facilities.
Going to have a motion and a second, council. Ms. Schumacher?
Struggle through this. I make a motion that we, um, approve the ordinance number two, series of two thousand and seventeen on the first reading.
Thank you, second, Mr. Gill, second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, could I have a roll? Could you call a roll, please?
Mr. Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Well, thank you all. Thank you. Any other business to bring forward? Mr. Meisner?
I, I would just like to take a minute to recognize and to, to thank, uh, Ms. Hensley for your cooperation and, and assistance. While she's pro to this whole process, um, she's gone through a lot in the last year and a half or whatever it is. She's been very cooperative with the city and, uh, provided a lot of insight and guidance to that group, um, but also took a lot of heat in the group in terms of, it was not, the whole group was not made up of all pro marijuana people. I mean, the, the group was a really well-balanced group with a number of people that were not in favor of marijuana, but were in favor of what we were trying to do. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say thank you to the whole committee, which was a very great endeavor, and I fully understand everything that everybody went in, all the time given to this, and it made it a little clearer for those of us not on the committee, and I just want to applaud them, all of you, citizens, city people, everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? We're adjourned.